Okay. Good evening. Sorry for the delay. The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of March 18th, 2021, was convened virtually and hosted in the Media Center of Anthony Wayne Middle School, 201 Garside Avenue, Willi, New Jersey. The state of statement of compliance setting for time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being convened. Can I get them over?
I'll move.
Hello, Mr. Giordano and Mr. Duffy. Please rise for a flag salute and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Albany's.
Here.
Mr. Bubba.
Here.
Mr. Duffy.
Present.
Mr. Giordano.
Here.
Mrs. Kazan.
Here.
Mrs. Kumar. Mr. Pavlak.
Here.
Mrs. Putup.
Here.
And Mrs. Shear.
Here.
Okay. Dr. Toback.
So for my report this evening, I know that we have a number of presentations tonight. So I'm going to make it very brief. I just really have an announcement. The Wayne Board of Education and the District Administration, the Wayne Education Association, Mayor Vergano, and the Wayne Township Health Department have been working together to create an opportunity for Wayne School employees to receive a COVID-19 vaccination. So as a result of this effort, we're happy to report that 100 teachers per week will be able to be vaccinated at the Wayne Township Vaccine Clinic. This includes all school employees. I've mentioned teachers. It's all school employees. Thank you to all parties for making this a reality for our school employees. The HIV report, I have to report that there are no cases of HIV during this reporting period.
Can I interrupt? Dr. Toback. This is an important development. So I want to personally thank Mayor Vergano on behalf of the board and our teachers. This is wonderful news and will go a long way in keeping our schools open going forward. We've already compiled a list of teachers who need appointments and Mayor Vergano will be adding them to the vaccine schedule over the next few weeks. If the dose important service you are offering to our school community at this time, and we do appreciate it. It takes a village. Thank you. Okay. Continue. Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. What'd you say?
Student reps, which that's part of student representatives get their reports.
Okay. Are we ready? Gina, Joseph.
Hi, I'm here. Thank you for having me. Wayne Hills wins two events, places second overall in 2021 NJAPT Physics Olympics. Six students from the Wayne Hills Engineering Club competed virtually in three events in the NJAPT Physics Olympics on two Saturdays in February and March. This competition is held annually at Monmouth Regional High School and was held virtually for the first time this year. Isaac Gotian, Saleem Kim, Sakshi Land, Nick Pepoli, Kanta Stan, and Chris Wu formed the powerhouse team from Hills that scored first place in both the Tower of Cards and Fermi Question Event. The Hills team also made a great showing in the Toothpick Roller Coaster event and came in second place overall for this year's competition. Congratulations to all members of the Wayne Hills team. Great job. Congratulations to John Ospak, a senior at Wayne Hills, who has been awarded the Rensselaer Medal for, from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. This prestigious award has been awarded since 1916 to one student in any given high school and is designed to recognize the student's strength and success in the fields of mathematics and science. The Wayne Hills Millennial Winter Guard is enjoying an exciting and productive virtual competition season with their show, Something in the Attic. So far, the guard has earned two excellent ratings with three or more competitions to go. The Wayne Hills Jazz Ensemble has planned an outdoor jazz coffee house for Tuesday, April 20th, starting at 6:30 PM. This will be held on the oval in front of the school and audience members are asked to bring in lawn chairs. Also featured will be members of our Jazz Improvisation Class. The Wayne Hills Skylar Colfax Band Through the Ages Concert premiered on Wayne Hills TV Channel on Tuesday, March 17th at 7:00. The virtual concert features 6th and 7th and 8th grade band members of SCMS and the Symphonic Band from Wayne Hills High School. A special guest performance by the Wayne Hills High School Winning Avengers Ensemble is also included. This concert can easily be seen anytime now by searching the Wayne Hills TV YouTube page. The Wayne Hills Leo Club is participating in the 2021 Vietnam Veteran Paracord Challenge. They will be using 500 feet of green paracord to produce around 64 quick-release paracord bracelets that will be sent to Operation Gratitude. Leo Club members will have from March 16th to March 26th to compete, making the, complete making those bracelets and turn them into Mrs. Fishman in order to submit them in time for completion. The color green is one of the colors of service ribbons that Vietnam veterans receive. So this will be a tangible way to express our gratitude for the cause. And congratulations as the Wayne Hills Boys High School Team, Basketball Team, won their league championship this season. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me again. Congratulations to the Boys Bowling Team on finishing their season with a 7-0 win over St. Joseph's and a 9-5 record on the year. Led by seniors Jared De Alessandro, Justin Sonnet, Ryan Tombeck, and Michael Adipietro, the boys placed second in the Independence Division BNC. Boys Fencing finished with their best season ever this year. Valleys freshman James Sun finished week 6, 9-0, and was 24-6 on the season, finishing second on the team to senior foilist Zach Januk, who finished at 24-5. Great year for his boys. Wayne Valley's winter track teams are off to a terrific start. Congratulations to the Girls' Winter Track Team for winning the Independent Polar Bear Invitational. They won eight out of the 12 events contested and every team member contributed points to the victory. At the same Independent Polar Bear Invitational, senior Gavin McGarrity won the shot put contest and junior Ryan Pena won both the 800 meter and 600 meter races. Great job to all. Congratulations to former Wayne Valley athlete and current Girls' Fencing Assistant Coach Francesca Russo, who placed 18th in the 2021 Women's Sabre Individual World Cup and is currently striving for a spot on the 2021 U.S. Olympics team. The Wayne Valley counselors have been sending messages of positivity to students and staff all month to spread kindness throughout the building. Almost 2,500 third-party compliments sent in by students and staff are newly done being prepared and are set to be distributed soon. Mrs. Vaca's U.S. History classes are busy creating their social reform projects to foster change in society. Each student can select a topic they believe in and design their own approach to fix a social issue and evaluate the democratic process. Thank you to Miss Amy's Marketing Classes and Valleys One Team for designing and promoting their Fight Pretty campaign to support former student Lindsay Slider and her fight against leukemia. Great job to juniors Emily Wilson and Sydney Betts on securing over 50 COVID vaccine appointments for vulnerable seniors in Wayne. The girls independently organized a system to serve as a go-between for the unvaccinated and local health authorities and St. Joseph's Wayne Hospital. Thank you.
One of these days I'll remember to unmute. It causes feedback and it's, I keep forgetting to turn it on and off. My apologies. Thank you, Joseph. Thank you, Gina. Great report. Did anyone have any donations to read?
Yes, I have one donation to read.
Thank you.
Wayne Valley's, Wayne Hills PTO donated funds to benefit the students at Wayne Hills in the amount of $1,675.
Thank you. Thank you both. Have a great evening. Okay. Back to you, Dr. Toback.
Mr. Moffett, and for discussion about the second public input on the 2021, '22 budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Sorry, you are first, Mr. Moffett. Go ahead.
Yes, tonight is the second input session for the general public. It is on for a vote tonight under item 05, approval of the tentative budget. Once it's approved by the board after consideration tonight, it'll be forwarded to the county office for final review and will be ready for the public hearing once approved by the department on May 6. So it is on tonight, and if you have any input, please call in for the first session of open public comment. Thank you.
Does that conclude your portion?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. I'm assuming the board all had their time to look over the budget. We all received our copies and are up to speed, unless anyone has any questions or discussion right now? Okay. Back to you, Dr. Toback.
Okay. So Mrs. Reichman and I are once again happy to provide the community with a recommended plan for returning more of our students to school and for more instructional time. Especially glad to report that many parents wrote recently about how much their children are already enjoying some additional time in school and some more time with their friends. We've been working to do more in order to make sure that we heard voices from across the district. We completed surveys for our parents and another survey for our staff members. We know that many parents will be returning their children to school, and we made some adjustments to our original proposal based on feedback that we received. Presentation we're about to share was shared previously with the community yesterday to allow for time for review. This evening, we also have Dr. Goldberg in attendance. Dr. Goldberg is an infectious disease specialist and he works for the district as a consultant on pandemic-related matters. Also wanted to take a moment of time this evening just to thank the community, and we'll talk a little bit more about your response, but what a great response that we had for our survey. This is a huge help and it really helps us to understand what's most important to you. Also wanted to, once again, reiterate a little bit what Mrs. Kan said regarding Mayor Vergano and the Wayne Health Department along with the WA as far as our progress with making vaccines available to teachers. That's a, that's a huge step forward for the district and I look forward to seeing that move along very quickly. Richard, I'd like to just move on now to the coronavirus map. First part. So let's get started. So we look at this every board meeting just to see the general trend in New Jersey. So in the United States, there's generally a downward trend in COVID cases, but here in New Jersey, we experienced a plateau. And now we're seeing an increase in cases. So while there is an 11% increase in the number of new cases, the number for those passing away or being hospitalized is decreasing. But there's definitely an increase in cases and we'll talk a little bit more what that looks like in school districts. If you can go to the next page. So there's a new Department of Health COVID Activity Report that came out, and this one is a little older. The new one came out today. We don't have it in here, but it is essentially the same map except there's one additional county that is now high risk. So as you could see, if you look at the table at the very top, there's one week where we dropped moderate risk, but otherwise we've been at high risk for some time. Okay, if you can go to the next slide. In terms of staffing and in terms of students positive in quarantining, you could see that on March 4th at the beginning of the month, our numbers were very low. When you get to March 11th, you could see there was almost like an explosion in cases. When you add it together, the totals add up to 341 either students and staff quarantining or students and staff positive for coronavirus. So then you go to March 15th, and I was hopeful that we would continue maybe in a slightly downward trend, but now if you go to the next page, you see quite a bit of growth in our numbers. So this last positive and quarantine, this last positive and quarantine chart shows our numbers. That's for today. So unfortunately, today is our worst day that we've had when it comes to the number of students and staff either positive or quarantining. We went to over 400 individuals in the final column on the right. Since the chart was produced, we actually had two more staff members that tested positive. Plus, there is also a number of contact tracing investigations in process. So that number at 403 is actually higher. There is good news, though. Previously, I talked about the fact that when we have quarantining staff and positive staff getting around the number of 50, that's something that caused us to shut down. At this point, we have an additional over 50 new subs. We have permanent subs in every building, and we also have 12 staff members back from medical leave after being vaccinated. So that's all good news, but those numbers are high. And those numbers, like I said, that's, that's really, that's our single worst day when it comes to that number. But those are the good news in that we have a good amount of time before we get to April 19th and our return to school. So Dr. Goldberg, if you can go to the next, I'm sorry, Dr. Goldberg. Dr. Bashard, we'll be getting to Dr. Goldberg in a second. Okay. So as you could see, we wanted to get to the point. So our administrative recommendation is to proceed as planned with changes based on feedback from the community, Board of Education employees, and with consideration of COVID activity and expert advice. So the first thing, the April 19th return. So you can see the elementary K-2 for five abbreviated days of 145 dismissal, no cohorts, and social distancing is left less than six feet. Dr. Goldberg is on as a panelist, so I just wanted to ask him, I mean, you saw we had many additional cases, and that's of course cause for concern, but the question is, is it safe or advisable to reduce social distancing to under six feet at the elementary grade levels? So that is a question that exists in the district. There's concern about that. And Dr. Goldberg, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about that issue.
Thank you. Hopefully everyone can hear me. Somebody would just nod so I know that I haven't run afoul of modern technology as those of us with gray hair occasionally do. It's been quite a several months since I last spoke to the board and to the community, and I think we've learned quite a lot about COVID. And I think what we have learned and what has been shown in other school districts is that transmission of infection among the young children, among the elementary school children, K through 2 and slightly older, is not very efficient. Inevitably, what we find is when, and other schools have reported and other districts have reported, that when these children become infected, they become infected usually from their parents. So it doesn't go up. It usually goes down. And I think that is the basis why you're seeing in many districts and including Wayne, starting off with elementary school and K through 2 years of age, bringing them back in much sooner and at a, if you will, a much closer ability. The issue of six feet is soon to be settled officially by CDC, I think within the next few weeks. Many of you, I'm sure, have read and seen that the six-foot standard is probably going to drop down to a more recognizable three feet. And again, this is quite useful for allowing more children to get together in classroom. And again, in younger children that you're talking about in the elementary school, they just don't produce the same kind of viral spread as you can see in later on in the older population. So bringing these young children back without cohorting but with social distancing, and we have spoken before, Dr. Toback and I, about four feet still is going to be a foot greater than what will probably be the new standard. And I think this is a excellent way of bringing these children back.
Right. So let's go on to the discussion about the middle school and the high schools. So those students are coming back for a full day to increase instructional time, but we're maintaining cohorts. We're adding lunch. So Dr. Goldberg, can you comment a little bit about serving school lunch? You can speak about whether it is advisable to maintain a school lunch program given the pandemic, and if so, how can that be done safely?
The the issue with high school students and older, I think, is quite obvious, especially looking at the graphs that you previously showed, where in the high schools are having more of a outbreak among their students. And we do know that students on the high school level do pass it back and forth among themselves. Lunch is something that can be done safely. It needs to be done with social distancing whenever possible, now that the weather is turning nice. If it could be done outside or in areas where windows are open and airflow can be assured, just as we're seeing with restaurants now opening with more people involved in other states, not so much in New Jersey, I'm sorry to say, but in New York and Connecticut, it can be done in a safe manner. And I think that it should not be a problem if done correctly.
So just for anyone who's tuning in tonight with high school children, so there are a number of steps the district is taking to increase safety for our students and for our staff. So the first thing is that we are renting large tents, at least two per each high school, and those tents will be, they'll be a combination that we've used for lunch for students who like to go outside for lunch. We also have a number of tables and chairs and benches, a variety of different ways that students can stay outside. Obviously, if the weather's poor, the tents will help as far as allowing students to stay outside, even in weather that's not as ideal as what we'd like it to be. The other thing, there's exciting news for juniors at both high schools. Okay, so the exciting news is that part of the plan to alleviate the number of students in the building for lunch is to also allow students to go out to lunch. So traditionally, that is a senior privilege. We're going to extend that to the junior class for just this brief period of time to allow some additional flexibility and to allow students to be out of the building. So all said and done, there are ample opportunities for students and there's various ways that students can be spread out safely at our high schools and also at our middle schools. The middle school benefits for that is there are different lunch trades, so that's a little easier. High school's a challenge because they do have a unit lunch, and so the unit lunch means all students are at lunch at the same time. Okay. Dr. Bashard, if you can go to the next page. Okay. So basically, what I've provided here is summary of our special education program and our students in self-aided programs are already receiving in-person instruction five days per week. The next step in the progression is for our out-of-class resource students to return April 19th for four days of instruction at the middle and high school level. Goals to maintain our students in their current placement and cohorts and rotation as their peers. So that's for special education. If we can go on to the next slide for our parents, for children in the early childhood center. See, basically what we've done is we've just simply included the schedule. So this is more informational, but obviously the difference is five days. Okay? So it's the same schedule as far as time goes, but five days. If you can go to the next slide, please. Okay. So this is basically an explanation about why April 19th was identified as a date to return. Okay. Dr. Goldberg, in December, health officials across the country warned against travel and gathering for the holidays, and even with many families taking precautions, two weeks later, in mid-January, we hit the peak of the pandemic, just as health officials predicted. Most school districts in New Jersey were closed during the first two weeks of January as a precaution. What's different now, and is it advisable to close schools after spring break? And will remaining in cohorts help with that transition?
Unfortunately, from an epidemiologic point of view, I don't think there is much difference at the moment now than there was back in December. Yes, public health officials throughout the country warned post-winter break or winter time off that there would be a surge in COVID cases. I can tell you at St. Joseph's, we saw the surge, and again, shortly afterwards, we saw the surge in children with that inflammatory disease process that occurs sometimes afterwards. And it was directly related to people who just, even with all the best meaning, are truly COVID-fatigued and let their guard down. We can already see the pictures coming out of Florida and other places where spring break occurs, where it is obvious that social distancing, mask wearing is still, is not being done, setting us up for a two-week period at the beginning of April where cases will rise again. As was mentioned earlier, unfortunately, here in Passaic County, cases are beginning to rise again. We're seeing some early, early numbers from people who've taken earlier spring breaks from other school systems or other family gatherings, and it's going to be of concern. We will, you know, it's not difficult to predict that the same thing will happen again by keeping children in cohorts in the older school, in the high schools and other areas where transmission is always a problem, it will allow for better quarantining and for better, as you put it, a surgical aspect rather than taking out whole classes or whole schools, but in cohorts at a time. I'd like to say that the immunizations that are going through will make a difference, but it's still too early, and most parents, most people still, unless they have qualified, have not been immunized. Hopefully by summer, this will not be an issue as immunizations take off and will be able to do without it. But for now, it is advisable to prepare, just as we did back in January, for an uptick in cases and the need to increase quarantine as a result.
Okay. Dr. Bashard, if you go to the next slide. Okay. So the proposal that we had included May 3rd as a return date for grades 3 to 5, but there were three factors that led to a change in our recommendation, and you could see those listed here. We obviously received a good amount of feedback. We knew that there would be problems with drop and pickup, and also there was a great concern among our employees about the transition back to school all at once. So it's very difficult to have the first day of school with all the different things that have to be in place for elementary schools, including the shields, including all the other things that students are not used to, because we do have a substantial number of students returning, and so you'll be able to hear about that in just a few minutes when we go over the survey. Okay, but basically, that's just an explanation about the April 26 date. We did move that up, and at this point, what I'd like to do is turn things over to Mrs. Reichman to talk about the parents and student survey results.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Bashard, you can advance the next slide. I know many of you had an opportunity to look at the presentation online, and I'm just going to share some broad strokes further reinforce the plan that we were recommending tonight and shared with you all yesterday. Overall, we had significant participation in the survey. We received I'll start over. Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. I know many people had an opportunity to look at the survey results. We shared it yesterday, and for the purpose of this evening, I will share out some broad strokes that further support and reinforce the plan that we are recommending tonight and shared out with you yesterday. We had great participation in the survey. Overall, we received 6,406 responses at the time that the survey closed on Friday, which is 84.8% of our total population. So thank you to our community. Your participation is super important in informing our decisions and recommendations. You can go to the next slide. This slide details the questions that were specific to kindergarten. 69.9% of kindergarten parents said that they would be willing to commit to an instructional model from April 19th through the end of the school year. 69.3% said they would want their child to attend school five days per week without cohorts and with death shields in place. 13.3% said they prefer the district maintain the current hybrid model with smaller classes, and 17.4% indicated that their children will remain virtual. And 17.4% indicated that their children will remain virtual. So you can see that close to 70% are planning for their children to attend five days per week. We can go to the next slide. Almost 70% will maintain their in-person program. And now it will include five days per week. And 13.3% indicated an interest in establishing a separate class for fully virtual kindergarten, knowing that this could require a change of teacher. Can go to the next slide. For elementary population, under the current model, we have 75% attending school under the hybrid three-day, two-day-a-week. 21% are currently virtual. 70.5% are willing to commit to an instructional model from April 19th to the end of the school year. 69.7% of parents indicated they want their child to attend five days per week with desk shields. 18.1% prefer to, prefer that the district maintain cohorts. And 12.2% will remain fully virtual. So once again, close to 70% plan to send their children in five days a week. We can go to the next slide. A very small percentage would switch to remote with the five-day return plan. We can go to the next slide. This slide includes our survey information for middle school. Almost 60% is willing to commit to an instructional model that runs from April 19th through the end of the school year. 66.2% want their children to attend a full-day hybrid model. 16.8% will stay remote. And 15.8% prefer the minimal day. So, so again, the overwhelming majority, 66.2%, are preferring that their children attend full-day, five-day-a-week model. I'm sorry, full-day hybrid model, which is three days and two days for middle school. Next slide, please. This slide shows the participation from each middle school. You can see we have parents participate just about the same amount from each middle school. And there were questions in previous meetings about office hours. 39% of our students attend office hours regularly. This has been something that has been discussed. And with the extension to the full day, teachers would have an opportunity to build in class time to respond to student questions and provide extra support using breakout rooms. We can go to the next slide. This is our high school slide. Currently, 48% of our students are virtual. 51% said they are willing to commit to an instructional model from April 19th through the end of the school year. 49% would prefer to have an option to provide two weeks' notice to make a switch. And 48.3% want their child to be in a full-day hybrid model in which lunch will be served. So once again, it looks like here, a little less than half would like their child to attend full day in the hybrid model with lunch. Can go to the next slide. 55.8% once again said they'd like their child to attend full day in the hybrid model. And we gathered some information from our high school population about office hours. 24% regularly attend office hours. And as we did with middle school, we discussed ways of building extra support and help time into the full-day class period. We can go to the next slide. And Dr. Toback is going to share some of the staff results.
Okay, Dr. Bouchard, if you can move ahead. Great, so we did a broad survey of staff. And so a very open-ended question that was asked at this point. Okay. How about now? Okay, there we go. All righty, so I apologize for that. So we did a staff survey. The staff survey was a very open-ended survey. And you could see we had a good response from our staff. Not quite as many as we would like to see, but we've also heard from the staff in different meetings and things like that. So at this point, you could see where the responses came from. You could see on the next slide, the positions. You could see the overwhelming majority of people that participated in the survey were teachers or educational specialists. And also, the pairs and our support staff contributed greatly to the survey. Okay, so we opened the staff survey. We allowed, they mentioned for open-ended comments. And so staff members could write whatever they wanted to. So we're very happy to see that many of our staff members wrote positive comments. So you can see, if you go through this, there's a few takeaways. One, our staff members are very excited about seeing our students back in school and to returning, at least to have a greater sense of normalcy. So I think it was really, it was very nice that so many staff members wrote these comments. We certainly appreciate it. And we like the enthusiasm that we see in these comments. If you go to the next slide, which is a continuation of comments. The other thing, the other takeaway, I think that's important, is that many of our staff members expressed that they feel safe. And they have fewer no concerns about health and safety. So that's also a very nice thing to hear from our staff members. The district did take, make a great effort to make sure that our staff members have all the PPE. And I think also our students do a great job as far as general following rules, wearing their masks, trying to maintain social distance. Then we can get to the staff concerns. Okay, so there's a number of pages of staff concerns. Some of them about office hours. You can see the issue with spring break is a very important issue. For many staff members are very concerned about what happens after spring break. Another issue that is raised here is the daily health assessment being completed. So yes, we still struggle. We had improvement. But as of late, we have basically had a lot of problems with the daily completion of the health check. Staff members have also repeatedly expressed that the hybrid model is hard. It is very difficult to teach two populations of students at the same time. There's no question about that. So if you go to the next slide. So you could see some of the staff members mentioned. If we have the number of employees necessary to effectively contact trace to keep everyone safe in a timely manner. So that's something that does happen every day. At this point, we do have enough staff members. You know, our school nurses do a wonderful job with that, along with our supervisor. So we also have some questions about space in classrooms. We certainly look at some of those issues, you know, the numbers of students and how to fit them in there safely. There might be some concerns about that. Understand that. We're going to talk, if you go to the next slide. There's, there's also issues of Zoom fatigue, screen time, teacher burnout. These are all problems in every district. And, you know, we are, we're hoping for better days. It is difficult. And I know that the staff members have really put in an extraordinary effort to keep our schools going and to continue to work with our students. One of the things that occurred this week under this screen is a change to the win period. So that was a topic of discussion at our last meeting. And so we made some significant changes to the win period, which is something Mrs. Reichman will get to a little bit. But that's a major change at the elementary level. And so that's based on teacher input. We made some changes for that. Let's see what else we have here. There's been some questions about when classrooms will be sanitized. So we have a second shift of custodians that are going to be doing that work. Some staff members asked about N95 masks. So those are options if staff members request them, those are available. And then you can see, if you go to the next screen, the staff concerns by occupation. So you could see, depending on the class of employee that we have in the district, you can see the concerns that they have, things that were most represented. We see spring break is a concern, the health screenings. You can see all these issues. So we are working on all these things. We have heard from our staff, and certainly, we're doing everything we can to address these issues. But first part is, obviously, it's adding them together, figuring out what's happening and figuring out what those concerns are and then acting upon them. So at this point, Mrs. Reichman is going to go ahead and review a few other changes.
Dr. Goldberg, you can advance. And you could go to the next slide. So as Dr. Toback began to say, there were a number of questions that came up about the win period. We did listen to all, we read all the comments, listened to all of the concerns that were expressed. Can you hear me? Oh, okay. And what we did was we took a more flexible approach. So this time, the extension of the day from the time the children are home is intended for teachers to address any student needs. They would be able to communicate with their teacher and get additional help for any work that was concept, skills, or work that was taught that day or taught that week. The classroom teacher would communicate directly with the students and parents to coordinate and communicate out what the plan is for the week. It may be two days for math, two days for language arts. It may be flexible on any given day. But more information would become forthcoming directly from the teacher. It would also be a time for 504 meetings, IP meetings, counseling sessions, meeting with colleagues. Teachers will maintain an activity log. So we will know what their schedules look like. And they will communicate out weekly with parents to let them know specifically when extra help is being offered for students. And, and again, the other idea that's important to communicate is parents also have flexibility during this time to make determinations and decisions about what would be the best use of this time for their child. As the weather gets nicer, they may make a decision to use time outside, engaging in a social or physical activity, a PE activity. Or it may be time that parent needs to run an errand or do something important for their child. So the overall theme is that there is a lot more flexibility and an opportunity to just get extra help from the teacher and engage in counseling or other activities, art, music, outside of the school day. We can go to the next slide. There's a lot of discussion about, and you saw in the survey, asking parents to commit to an instructional model for the end of the school year. Ideally, that simplifies things for us because we know how many students are in school. But we do recognize that we have a process in place that many like and would like to maintain. So this slide details. Parents, as we have been doing, can make the request to change the instructional model through the 15th of each month. Any physical change that occurs would happen on the first day of the next month. And the next bullet just exemplifies if you were to submit a change on February 10th, then your child would, requesting to return to school, your child would return on the first day of the next month, which in this example is March 1st. You know, up until now, I know that many principals have been super liberal. And as requests have been coming in, students have been flexing in and out. It might not be so easy to do that anymore because we have a large number of students returning. And we really have to figure out how to safely position all the desks, control trafficking, and consider other things where we could be putting too many students in a situation at one time. So parents should be prepared that requests need to be made by the 15th. And it's very likely, and most likely, that the first of the next month would be the day that the request would be honored. Parents always have the option, however, for their child to go virtual at any time. We can go to the next slide. There were questions that came in about the change in schedule for kindergarten. The priority was to maximize instructional time. So the in-school time is reduced to two hours. However, that will be full instruction and we can maintain the current classroom teacher under this model. Under this revised schedule, students would remain with their homeroom teacher. And then their specials would be completed asynchronously at a convenient time at home. We can go to the next slide. We've received many, many, many questions about end-of-the-year events. I know that we are anxiously anticipating the end of the year and looking forward to preserving all these celebrations. Right now, you should continue to work with the schools, with building administrators, to organize and coordinate. But anything that's planned right now has to be in coordination with the CDC and Department of Health guidelines. We are waiting and anticipating that we'll have more information from our local county superintendent. She did indicate that they have been putting pressure and putting in requests to Governor Murphy. And we are hoping to have some guidance on how to proceed with all these end-of-the-year events soon. So we anticipate that we would have that in the next couple of weeks. So, so again, anything that's being planned now, we're operating under the current guidance in anticipation that we will have updated guidance. What we're thinking and hoping is that maybe after the spring break period ends, a few weeks after that, we'll have some updated guidance. And Sad, you can go to the next slide. But that concludes our presentation. And we appreciate and thank you all for your participation in the survey.
Did you have anything to add, Dr. Toback? Okay, so board members. Any questions for Dr. Goldberg while we have him? Mrs. Albanese?
I have questions actually regarding the plan. Now is the right time? Okay, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, absolutely.
One of my questions, I think you answered tonight, was did the staff participate in preferences for school model? So it looks to me like they were asked to give open-ended questions, open-ended statements perhaps. So I'm curious why we didn't ask staff and administrators to weigh in on what they feel is the best model suited for their building. It might have been interesting to see from them, maybe segregated by level or maybe either by building, what their top three concerns were that might have helped us in seeing where areas that we needed to work on. Maybe also what their top three pros were that are working within their building. So I think maybe we could have involved staff and building administrators who are really on the front lines in the building, more in, you know, what they thought worked best, what didn't work. I think it could have been useful information. So that was one of my questions when I saw just the staff listings. If you want me to ask them all, then you could, you want to answer it now?
Continue, Eileen.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Albanese.
Oh, thank you. That's right. I know that we've gotten this question a few times. I don't know the answer, and I don't know that we've seen an answer. The early childhood center, parents have asked why we have an abbreviated schedule. There are youngest learners, they're preparing for kindergarten. I myself don't know the answer as to why it's not a full day and that we've gone back to a regular schedule for them. So maybe we could have a discussion about that. And my other real question is, there's no obvious reason for why case numbers are going up, why we're seeing additional infections. So could you talk a little bit about maybe what the district sees as reasons for why we're seeing an increase prior to spring break? That's a little different from what we saw from Thanksgiving or the holiday break. Are there things that maybe we could all be working on as far as trying to keep numbers down? Where do we see maybe potential areas that are giving us those increased numbers? Thank you.
Ms. Albanese, before you ask, Dr.
Wait a minute, Mr. Duffy. I think I want to let Dr. Toback take you one at a time. Start with Mrs. Albanese's questions, and then you can go next, Mr. Duffy.
Okay, so with regard to the concern about the principals and for the teachers. So yes, we had an open-ended discussion, but we also met, I met personally with every one of our principals to talk about each of the plans and what it is that they saw as important and their priorities. So we did have a meeting, and in the end, we met actually twice with our principal groups. And we also met with the WTA representatives or officers. We met a number of times with them as well. We also met with the WVA to hear their concerns. We had some lengthy meetings to go over some of the issues that they saw with the return to school plan and things like that. So they were very open with, you know, expressing in some cases some concerns about the plan. But we did have these meetings. So as far as the question about the case numbers increasing, overall, we're in a situation where there's, there's a lot of different, I guess, ways to look at the situation right now. In some cases, there's a certain amount of randomness to the whole thing. In other cases, there are some events, there have been some social events that have led to a good number of of cases. There are some athletic events, non-school-sponsored athletic events, people playing games, you know, outside of school. The students in close contact with each other. And the other thing, I guess, is the reality that there are, there are more students in school. And so if you see the numbers, yes, there are a lot at the high school level. There's also a lot in the middle schools and the elementary level. I think that just the fact that there's more students together in and out of school means there's more situations where a student is positive, there's an exposure, and there's more students quarantined. We do have quite a few students, a huge number of students that are in the quarantine right now. So those are probably some of the driving factors. With regarding the early childhood center, you want to talk about that? Okay, go ahead.
So just on to your question about the early childhood center. Apparently, these schools are creating an abbreviated schedule, which for the half-day sessions is 30 minutes last and for the public program is an hour and 25 minutes last. In order for us to recover all that time, we would need to cover 11 teachers five days a week for their preps, which is 55 preps. We just did not have the staff. We have posted for CPA positions. We're, we're just not getting applicants. There was also an issue with transportation. So that's my, my response.
Mr. Duffy, I'm sorry, I didn't have my mic on.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, can you hear me? For Dr. Goldberg, if you could, the NJ, try to pull this up here. The New Jersey Department of Health says that the self-quarantine is voluntarily, but it's compliance is expected. Can you give us a little bit on that?
Not, not really. I don't work for the New Jersey Department of Health and for those who I've worked with before know that I often am at odds with what they say. The concept of self-quarantine, I think part of the problem is that a lot of things have become politicized over the last few months in dealing with it and that the parts, my speaking is that the New Jersey Department of Health has tried to be everything to everybody. Self-quarantine after exposure is still recommended. It is voluntary in that we do not have a police state where people go out and ensure that you're staying home. The last time I think that was being done was back at the turn of the last century with, when tuberculosis was rampant and there were actually tuberculosis police working for the New York State Department of Health, who would ensure that you stayed home. But I think it is still, you know, making itself, making it so voluntary just assumes that people will do the right thing. It's still something that should be done. The only caveat to that is we're seeing that those people who have been immunized and who have been exposed and who remain asymptomatic do not need to be quarantined. And that's the new caveat to that rule. But I would still recommend that people who have been exposed to quarantine and the quarantine is 10 to 14 days depending on symptomatology.
So that's been exposed or have traveled?
I think the issue as far as I'm concerned, exposed is the phrase, is the word that I would say. For traveling, people who are traveling to endemic areas where they have not done social distancing, have not worn masks, I think it is in the interest of the general public that they quarantine. But there too, again, there's nothing that in the recommend, in the rules that say you have to.
Should we just say that nobody really knows?
You know, it's like filling out those forms when you come through customs. You're on your honor. One hopes that people will do the right thing. One knows that they don't. Hence, going back to the 14 days, quarant, 14-day period after a spring break that the schools have instituted to continue cohorting and just because we know that people just don't. And I think a lot of it in fairness to people is just plain COVID fatigue. From a personal point of view, I'm really tired of wearing a mask. I know it needs to be done. I know we should all do it, but like everybody else, I yearn for the day to not have to do it.
I agree. And if we said that this disease came out of China, China's been wearing masks for how long?
Well, in the Asian population and the Asian culture, wearing of masks is something that is quite common. And there's a lot to be said about wearing masks, although not being reported heavily at this point. This season, we have seen almost no influenza in New Jersey. We have seen very little respiratory syncytial virus in the pediatric population. This is all due to quarantining, social distancing, and of course, mask wearing. So there are benefits to it above and beyond COVID. And you know, I don't think this country will ever become like the Asian countries where masks are worn all the time. I refer you to today's discussion in Congress between Dr. Fauci and Senator Paul. But there's something to be said about it.
Is that all, Mr. Duffy?
That's it. Thank you, Doctor.
Okay. Do any, Mrs. Kumar?
Hi, this is just a general question about the plan. So I noticed that in our current situation, we're offering lunch at the high school lunch level eventually, but why are we not offering it at the elementary level? Is my first question. And the second question, if you could just go into a little bit more detail on why we're staggering the start of the K to two versus three to five?
Dr. Toback?
So I actually had a hard time hearing you, but I think your first question was about the full day, why the elementary schools are, are having a 1:45 dismissal? Is that, was that? Okay, with no lunch? Okay. Yep, so there are, there's, there's a number of factors that we're taking into consideration. One, if we have lunch, it means we need cafeteria and playground aids. We have not. We've, we've been advertising, we have five total candidates of which three of them didn't respond in trouble for interviews. So we really have had a very hard time hiring CPAs. Two, it's a matter of spacing, okay? The amount of square footage we have available for students is a much smaller facilities. And in some cases, for example, at some of our schools, we don't have the benefit of having a cafeteria and a gymnasium. So it's really a very difficult thing. There's the recommendation from our building principals and also our teachers at the elementary level. They had a hand in making recommendations about 1:45. The other part of it is that there is, there is a lot of concern about screen time. So the wind period does allow staff, I'm sorry, does allow students to take a step away. It's a flexible time period and it does reduce the amount of screen time. Screen time has been a huge issue with elementary parents this year. And so we tried to accommodate everybody's needs by having the 1:45 dismissal. The, the question about staggering. So from a principal's perspective, we said, I did meet with them. And one of the things we talked about was basically we reviewed the information regarding the number of students returning. We knew that we would have a significant number of students returning at our elementary schools. And at their elementary schools, there is only one principal. There's no assistant principal and they are on their own. Their concern was there will be so many details that in, on any return to school, first day of school is, is a very difficult situation. It's a tough day. There's a lot of crying that goes on. There's a lot of very upset parents, upset students. There's also the issue of returning to an environment that students are not used to seeing. They're returning to an environment where you have death shields everywhere. Returning to an environment that's not, and they haven't been in school in many cases for quite some time. So under those circumstances, the principals felt it would be quite a transition for one group. And then, but it, but it would be impossible to have that transition happen simultaneously. Where you have the youngest students and then the older students all in the building all at the same time. They just felt it was just, it was, it was over the top in terms of what, what would be required of them and the fact that they would not be able to attend to all the needs that exist simultaneously.
Okay, any other board members? Mrs. Sher?
You didn't think I wasn't going to speak, did you, Kathy?
Of course not.
So I had sent, I had sent an email, but I didn't get a response back. So I just wanted to get some of these questions answered. My first thought is when we ask the community to be substitutes, our pool overflowed. So now I'm putting it out there and I think that we should put it out there for CPAs, the cafeteria. Maybe there, all these people that agreed to be substitutes have now been fingerprinted and are ready to go. Maybe some of them would like to reach out to the board office and say that they would consider being a cafeteria playground aide and then we would solve that problem. I, I wanted to say that I noticed after reading the comments from the teachers that one of the things that I noticed came up a few times was they are saying how it is difficult not knowing which kids you're going to have like every two weeks. So I know I'm bringing this point up again, but I would like for us to consider for fourth marking period to possibly saying that you make a decision. And they're also asking for the lists ahead of time, the teachers. And I just wanted to point it out that this is not just something that I'm bringing up. This is something that the teachers are also asking for and would think would make their lives easier. I would like to, I know that we had talked about end of the year activities. However, I, as a board member, haven't heard a word about any of them, where we're looking to go with them or anything. I guess as a board member, I don't need to know that right now. But as someone whose son graduated last year and was like, you know, on edge every minute, trying to find out, is my son going to have a graduation? What are we going to do? Maybe we can just start informing the community of some ideas that we're thinking of just so they know that like these seniors are not being, I mean, you know, I thought it was bad last year for my son and he was only out for part of the year. I, I completely feel for, and I'm not just saying seniors, I'm saying seniors, eighth graders, fifth graders. You look forward to those activities for so long that, you know, now they've been out for a full year and we know that it's going to get nice out. Maybe we could just reach out to the community and of those different age groups and let them know some ideas that we have because sometimes the community could come back and help us and say, well, I know a place or I can help. You never know what's going to come up if we bounce some ideas off of them. And I really want to see those seniors get something they've been in, they've been in for a long time. I also wanted to ask about the SGOs for the teachers. I know that they did SGOs this year. I know that the state did not require SGOs this year. I believe I will have to look into that. And you don't have to answer this publicly, but I would like to know if the teachers, if we are using those SGOs because from virtual teaching myself, what I'm seeing is these kids are going in and out. They're not there every day. They're, you know, it would just be very difficult to judge a teacher on, if a child's not fully coming to school every day, to actually judge a teacher on their performance based on their SGOs. And I just wanted to say, we keep talking about the kids having COVID. Let's not forget that the staff gets COVID too. And, and that's also definitely an issue. And, and you know what? If it was, I know that you chose the 4/19 date, you gave me your rationale. If it was up to me, we would be back in school tomorrow. So thank you for all the work on the plan once again. I know it's not easy. But if we could just keep some of these other things in mind moving forward, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So Mrs. Sher, if you recall, I did call you on March 16th to respond to your questions. I understand that at that moment.
Were they in Dr. Toback?
4:30. And so I would have been more than happy to answer your questions at that time when I called you. And so I thought that you were okay because I said at that time that we shared the presentations with you and we shared a document with you for the rest of the board over the weekend. So I, I, as I said, I thought I did a good job reaching out to you to go over whatever questions you might have had. With regard to the question about seniors, well, I'm sorry, the seniors, the fifth graders, the eighth graders, the transitional events. Those are things right now that there are limitations. So, but we do have reservations that have been made at different places for, for these events, hoping to move ahead and hoping that the restrictions that do exist will be lifted. We are in prep, we are in position to go ahead with our end of year events. With regard to the lock-in, that really, that's been debated here at the board level, probably for the last few meetings. There's been questions about whether or not we should have a lock-in, not have a lock-in. The good news is that based on the survey, the lock-in show, or I'm sorry, there's a number of parents who are okay with committing. If you see, there's, there's probably 60 to 70% of parents that when they participated said they would be more than happy to commit to a model. So that does help us out and it does help the issue that you described about the uncertainty about who might be in a class. And you still have that problem, no matter what, in any school during a pandemic. And it's a day-to-day thing where students can be quarantined. You don't know what's going to be from day to day. So there's a lot of variables that are in place. And so it would be nice to have more stability for everybody. I think that would be wonderful, but I don't know if that's really possible at this time. But again, if the board wants to have a situation where we lock in and we require students or parents to commit their students and that's it for the year. I mean, that's, that's really, like I said, we've debated that here at the board level for a while. As far as the SGO part, I have to get back to you about that. Do you have an answer? Yeah.
So provide me with the SGO question, student growth objectives. This year, the SGO is not entered into the teacher evaluation system. However, we were guided by the state, I do attend all the meetings, to still have teachers, it's best practice and it's something that's not supposed to be above and beyond. It's something that we do. We set tiered goals tied into a standard, collecting data to help maximize each student's achievement towards meeting a grade level standard that we're responsible for teaching. So once again, as a best practice, we informed and asked teachers to set these goals, but they will not be evaluated upon students meeting those goals. So they're only, their final evaluation will be based on their observations and anything they submit in their documentation log. But we were just maintaining them just for the purpose of it being a best practice and something that we always do anyway.
Okay. Our members? Anyone else?
Yes.
Any questions about the plan? For Dr. Mark, sir?
Honestly, I wish I could just say we were going to open for five days for everybody straight through. Unfortunately, based on the information and speaking with Dr. Goldberg directly tonight, I understand the issues that we face. I still, I understand the principals in the elementary school, their concern. But I also have the concern for providing a least restrictive environment for our special ed students. And it seems like they're going to be there, but there's no regular ed classes. So I, I just don't understand how we're going to have inclusion for the week. The, we can't. Yeah, I had the same question about the preschool, which you've answered already. The other thing, and I'm not asking for an answer tonight, I'm making a comment here. I would like to see what our plan is to become compliant with all the IEPs, with all the hours that we're missing with students. And I think that's something we need to have a budget discussion about as well. So I'd like to, you know, I'd ask that administration put together a plan as to how we're going to accomplish this over the next, whatever, summer, next month's, whatever. But I, I'm going to support the, the, the phase five and hopefully this is the last phase. And the new phase in September, we're going to be, welcome back, everybody. I really hope that and I think with, you know, the guidance of Dr. Goldberg, as he continues to do. And Dr. Goldberg, thank you. It's been a long journey with us and we've been through the ups and the downs. And you've always been there to answer our questions and give us guidance. And I do really appreciate that and I want to thank you publicly for that. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's been an honor.
I will get back to Mr. Toback with his questions. I will get back to Mr. Podlak with his questions.
Well, could I just say one thing about academic this latest recovery plan is that, uh, Mr. Moffett, that will pay for academic recovery and services that will need to be extended? Is this, am I correct on this?
Yes, the second wave, the most recent amount was $1.8 million. That's available for programs that you mentioned, along with other costs that will be subsidized or reimbursed to district for those type of activities. And there's a potential third wave that's coming as a result of the $1.9 billion stimulus package that was passed recently.
That'll pay for a lot of services, thankfully. Hopefully, we'll be able to get everyone back on track as soon as things open up and the restrictions are lifted. And it's, it'll be nice to have the money to do so and not impact our other programs and services going forward. Okay. I'm sorry?
There's one question I'd like to ask Dr. Goldberg. Ask him. You know, there's been concern about the community, about our playgrounds, that our schools being closed. And so it makes sense to have this discussion and it makes sense to ask you the question. Our community, so the municipal playgrounds are open, the school playgrounds remain closed. And I was wondering, wondering, Dr. Goldberg, if you could advise the school district about, that's a tricky proposition to open playgrounds. But I wanted to hear from you if you would be willing to share with the Board of Ed about whether it's advisable to open playgrounds.
I also have to remember to unmute as I talk. The issue of playgrounds it depend, the issue of opening playgrounds really depends on the supervision that can be provided in them as well as what exactly we're talking about for playgrounds. The municipal playgrounds have been open, the weather is getting warmer. I think that's maybe one of the reasons why we're seeing an uptick in cases as an aside. If done correctly with cleaning of the facilities and with children remembering to wear masks, et cetera, I think it can be done. But the issue is, can it be done safely? It does record to be done safely without going into detail of what exactly is in the playground, it would take a large amount of people. And kind of listening to the conversation, it seems that's a rate limited step. So at this point, you know, I I don't think it would be an advisable thing.
Thank you, Dr. Goldberg. I'm sure Dr. Toback will reach out to you with the updates on that as as we hopefully increase staffing. Mr. Duffy?
Excuse me, if I, if I could. So, Doctor, with all due respect, we're talking about not opening playgrounds because of the the amount of people that would would take to clean or sanitize those playgrounds is that my what you're saying is correct?
What what I'm saying is that, you know, thinking about, and again, I'm not sure what exactly we're talking about for playgrounds. If you're talking about a playground with a jungle gym and a slide and, you know, sandbox, something I didn't have when I went to school. But i- if that's what you're talking about, you need people to supervise and make sure that children remain you know, wearing their masks and that these areas are kept clean and sanitized after usage. That, to my mind, requires staff. If it can be done, you know, if it can be done with the staff, then it can be done safely. As I listened to the discussion about graduation, I was thinking about the graduation up at the United States Military Academy at West Point last year. Yes, they held it, but if you remember, if you saw pictures, people were sit, were sitting six to 12 feet apart and everybody was well spaced out. Luckily, they have a lot of room up at West Point, so they could do it. It requires the ability to spread out, it requires the ability to do it with the person, with per, with increased personnel. So I'm not against opening playgrounds by any means. It just requires personnel.
I'm sorry, Dr. Toback, do you know how many, what the personnel is required to have the municipal playgrounds open?
Well, you have, you have two things. You have, as Dr. Goldberg mentioned, you have the cleaning component and you have the supervisory component. So you would certainly need adequate staffing to watch the children play in the playgrounds and to make sure that they're following all the rules they need to follow with, you know, just basics, keeping your distance and keeping your mask on, right? Those are the the main things. On top of that, you would need someone to clean the playgrounds after every use. So you would need a custodian to to clean each of these playgrounds. Based on what Dr. Goldberg is saying, there's a, there's a reasonable expectation parents would have. You would also probably have a situation where parents would want to perhaps opt their children out of using the playground. And that would be a very difficult thing. And the reason I say that is because some parents probably wouldn't be comfortable with with their children using playgrounds because in the end they're worried about the spread and things like that. So there might be parents in that situation as well. So it is, it's something, like I said, it can be done. You know, it's, the reason I asked the question is because I think it's a good question to ask because it is an important part of each school facility, these playgrounds. And use of those playgrounds is something that the students miss. And I have no doubt about that. And it's an unfortunate thing to see these beautiful playgrounds we have. Dr. Goldberg, for your knowledge, we have, we have some very nice playgrounds, beautiful playgrounds, they have slides, they have all kinds of different things. But we're also, the other thing to keep in mind, I think, right now is we're in a high risk area, right? We have, like I said, today was a, was a pretty bad day for us in terms of student and staff positive cases and quarantining. So added together, you know, there's maybe some things to look at, but certainly if we'd like to move ahead as a, as a school district of opening the playgrounds and adding the staff and everything that we would need to do that, I'm more than happy to do that.
To be revisited, Mr. Duffy. Thank you again, Dr. Goldberg. Anyone else? Are we going to keep Dr. Goldberg on for the public portion? Did you want to stay with us, Dr. Goldberg, in case anyone from the community had a question? I think they've been looking forward to your appearance. You're on mute. I didn't hear you.
Can I answer that question honestly? Perhaps it was better I was on mute.
Is that a yes or? Is that, is that a yes or a no?
You know, I honestly, it was pretty much a no. If it, if there were, if there are questions that I can answer, I'll stay on, but to be frank, the community scares me.
No one's going to force you to answer anything. You obviously are our consultant, but if there's something you feel you could help a, a community member understand better that that will be at your discretion.
I will stay on for a while. I need to get charger on the phone.
Thank you. Okay. All righty. Well, we'll, we should be quick. There's only a few hands raised. Thank you. Okay. I assume we're done with questions on the plan? I don't see any more hands up. Very good. Okay. Mr. Moffett, revisions to the agenda?
There are a few items tonight listed under M. Human Resources. We have a change on item number one, it's approval of leave requests. That'll be withdrawal number two, which is ID number 7387. Again, that's a withdraw. On the emergent item section, we have in section T, emergent human resources. We have a change to number two, which is approval of district staff. Number seven, we will be adding no medical benefits to the action. On item number 11, approval of resignations, number two will be revised, location to RC slash board office. We'll be adding a number 13, which is approval of increment withholding. And the recommended action reads as follows. Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, withhold the salary and adjustment increment for employee number 7211 for the 2021, 2022 school year for good cause with and directs the board secretary to provide the effective staff member with written notice of his action and reasons, therefore, within 10 days. The next item will be in our X section, which is emergent school resource legal, will be adding to items. Number one is an approval of settlement agreement, which action reads resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves a negotiated settlement agreement and release in the matter of employee ID number 8216 dated March 18, 2021, as attached by reference and further authorizes the board president and secretary to execute same on behalf of the board. The business administrator and superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same. We'll be adding X number, X two, which is approval of another settlement agreement. And the recommendation action is as, as reads, resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves a negotiated settlement agreement and release in the matter of student ID number 8358649962 AOL docket number EDS 10631-20 agency reference number 2021-32196 dated March 18, 2021, as attached by reference and further authorize the board president and secretary to execute same on behalf of the board. The business administrator and superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same. And that concludes the changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Okay. Onto our first public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for common on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or subsequent meetings under old business. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Putta. Okay, let's begin.
Hi, this is David Ginsburg to Amy Way. Thank you very much to the board for all your hard work. I think it's next on plan. So I really appreciate all the weekends nights you guys have put into this. Just a couple of quick questions for Dr. Toback and a point of clarification. I read his frequently asked questions and can he just share a little more after this about the desk shields in elementary school, maybe a picture or two what the desks look like? Are they removable? Are they fixed? It'd just be good to get a little sense of what those are going to look like. Understanding that in elementary school, the desks won't be six feet apart, most likely because of eliminating the cohorts, which based on Dr. Goldberg's recommendation is good. However, can you give us a little sense, is it three feet, is it four feet? How close will the desks be? I know each room may vary, but any rough indication I think would be super helpful to the parents. I know there's obviously a lot of sanitizing stations in the school, in the school itself. Would you guys consider, especially in the elementary schools, where you're getting rid of the cohorts in this, the six feet, putting sanitation like machines or Piro bottles in the room itself just to actually, you know, encourage the kids to do it even more often? And can you also confirm that the windows will remain open in the classrooms as we head to the spring? I agree wholeheartedly with Dr. Goldberg on the playgrounds, as much as I love my son to be able to play on playground. It's just really unnecessary. So I think those shouldn't remain closed. And there's just no reason to to open them and bring another element that challenges safety of high touch areas into play here, right? The focus on return to school should be just that, return to the elements that are really necessary, which is obviously classroom instruction, whatever one is needing. And do our best to eliminate things that are just unnecessary, like being on playgrounds. Municipal playgrounds are obviously very different because parents can be there with their kids, watching the direct contact as well as making sure the kids are sanitizing and keeping their masks on. So that's much more one-to-one experience versus what we have here in school. So if you can answer those after this in FAQ, that'd be really appreciated, Dr. Toback. And again, thank you for all your guys' time and effort. I think it's very planned.
Thank you. Next caller.
Good evening, Torius, 047 Woodlot Road. Just want to say thank you. I know it's been a long, sometimes contentious year. Appreciate all the efforts from the mayor, the administration, and I really appreciate all the teachers feedback in the survey. You know, personal story, my, my son's second grade teacher called me after school and just said, you know, I just want to let you know that I feel like I have my Luca back. And just, just to hear that and just for him being in school and just being a different kid just means the world to me. So I really appreciate it. My kids are really looking forward to going back. My brother is excited now. She only goes back a week after her brother in fourth grade. So again, long, hard fought year. This is where we are. Thanks again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller. Can you unmute? Is there a problem with the software, Dr. Rashard?
No, they just need to unmute themselves.
Okay, can you unmute? Move on, Dr. Rashard.
Allentown pesky, 41 Gibbs Drive. I also want to be the third caller to thank Dr. Toback, Ms. Reichman and the board. As a parent, I advocate for schools to be open in a safe manner. Students have a right to attend school for in-person learning. And students also currently may choose to attend school virtually as determined by their parents. Wayne is fortunate to have many dedicated teachers who want to teach. Today, you prioritize the ability of teachers to get vaccinated more quickly. And I think that's a major step in making the school environment even more safer. At your last Board of Ed meeting, I expressed my opinion that affording parents the ability to switch from remote to in-person or vice versa is a flexible way, in a flexible way with two weeks' notice, is a current benefit of the Wayne return to the school plan. It was a benefit since the start of the 2020 to 2021 school year. And it remains a benefit today. I have never personally executed the flexible two-week notice provision ever for my child. But Wayne parents deserve their flexi, flexibility in the, in case they need to. It helps the school environment because as Dr. Goldberg stated today, the science, the science shows more likely transmission from parent to child than from child to parent. Allowing parents in the community flexibility provides opportunities for parents to be vaccinated and then to send their children back to school safely without worrying about having to wait long periods of time. That is what is ideal. Restrictions to parents with forced deadlines is not helpful. Flexibility is beneficial. No teacher, I would think, would want a student to come back prematurely just because a parent has to meet a restrictive, non-flexible deadline. Your survey reveals 40.2% of middle school parents agree with me. 51% of high school parents. No data was presented in your survey on what teachers view. Flexibility is key. Dr. Toback, Ms. Reichman are correct. Many parents view that flexibility as a benefit. Actually, thousands of parents, based on your survey, view it this way. Let's open school for students, for teachers, with flexibility remaining as a benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Ida Ferrante, Wayne Education Association President. I would also like to echo Dr. Toback in thanking Mayor Vergano for his assistance in getting educators access to vaccination appointments. The mayor has always been there for the teachers and educational support staff in Wayne. Having access to a vaccine appointment is priceless for us. However, if the past few weeks have shown us anything, However, if the past few weeks have shown us anything, it is that the virus is still gripping our community. We have seen some disturbing trends recently. The numbers are going up again. Letters warning parents of new infections and the need to quarantine are unfortunately everyday occurrences. The reason is obvious. The community is not maintaining proper safety protocols. There are constant parties and social gatherings under the permission of and often with the encouragement of our parents. This is unsafe and it is undermining the efforts of the educators, the board, and the administrators. Students are going to large unmasked gatherings and then coming into school and putting our teachers and fellow students at risk. Now, kids are telling their teachers that they're going, going together to places like Florida on spring break. They will return to the school and many will fill their morning COVID forms dishonestly that will endanger all, all of us. It is for that reason that we urge you to do as other districts have and go virtual for the two weeks after spring break. We are now beginning to get our vaccines. The next few weeks will no doubt see many more get vaccinated. And we will finally have peace of mind and a chance to get out of the year safely, safely and healthy. Don't take that chance away from us. Give us a chance to get out of this year healthy. If the community want, community wants to gather at spring break and the holidays, they will. You can't stop that. None of us can. But what you can do, knowing that this will happen, is to protect us from the consequences of this behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Eileen D'Amico, 29 Manor Drive. Um, I just have a couple of questions. Uh, I guess first it was nice to see um, in the presentation uh, a number of the staff and teacher comments um, and their concerns. Uh, and I'm just wondering why the parent survey wasn't even remotely open-ended at all. Um, we had no opportunity to provide comment, so I'm just curious why that was. Um, my second question, and I guess it, it's for Dr. Goldberg to an extent. Um, i- it's really just more a point of clarification. I, I just, I continue to be confused by this is that i- if I heard correctly, um, the risks with things like spring break or, or, you know, extended holiday terms are really more about the behavior, not about the travel, if you will, itself, I think. And I, I guess that is my question. Um, you know, it's things like being in large crowds, being unmasked for, you know, extended periods of time and so on and so forth. But I guess to dovetail with that, my question then becomes, are those risks really any greater whether you're in Florida, Virginia, Kansas, New York, or New Jersey? You know, if you're sitting in your own backyard with 200 people and you're all unmasked and you're in close quarters, is the risk any greater or lesser because you're in New Jersey than you are um, in any other state? Especially in instances where other states, right now anyway, have case counts that are a lot lower than ours. Um, so I, I'm just hoping for some clarification there. And if it's the behavior that's the concern, okay, fine. Um, but you know, let's just be clear. It's not so much the travel itself. It's the behavior that's exhibited. Um, and quite frankly, that's going to happen whether you're in Florida or whether you're here in New Jersey. Um, I did see the slides with the number of parents that, you know, were willing to or would be happy with committing to a decision as far as going virtual or um, in-person for the remainder of the year, which is really at this point only, you know, three months. Um, I guess just based on, I, I would be curious though, from a high school student perspective, senior parents and students specifically, what percentage of those folks uh, would be willing or happy with committing to a decision? And based on that, you know, the question's been asked before. I'm going to ask it again. Why are we not willing or looking to consider a senior-only cohort for the last three months of the year? Um, quite honestly, I've had opportunity to speak to a number of senior students at Hills about a week and a half, two weeks ago for some other things. And the one resounding theme, uh, if it's not been heard by others already is that they just want the opportunity to be together. They understand it's together socially distanced with masks and all the other precautions. They just want the opportunity to be together as a class for the last few months of the school year. So I urge you please to consider, you know, putting a commitment type thing in place, even if it's only for the high school level. And if there's a way to then safely get the seniors who want to be there back in school for the last few months of the year. Last but not least, um, I'd just like to ask what, if anything, the administration, the Board of Ed, um, you're doing as a group or as individuals to lobby um, or to help the county lobby for state officials to make some decisions now versus waiting until, you know, what could be a few weeks after spring break um, for, to lift capacity restrictions or to add senior activities such as project grad graduation.
You're way over time now, Mrs. D'Amico. I get, I think we hear your question. No worries. Um, thank you. Next caller.
Hi, Jenny Franklin, 21 Keylana Drive. Um, I just have a couple of questions tonight, with the first being um, the fact that we won't consider combining the cohorts again at the high school level. That wasn't even a question in our survey. Um, how many kids are coming back to the high school on April 1st? And is that why we can't combine them? Or are we, do we just not want to do that? Um, because the numbers don't support it. As you know, most of the classes have three or four kids in them right now. The other question I have is that um, at some point in like the last month, maybe when we returned this most recent time, um, the parents started receiving a letter every time there was a positive case for a child or a positive case for a staff member. We now receive an email from the school, which was fine and it's, it was helping me uh, have a feeling of how many positive cases there were. Um, I think we've received two letters for staff and four for students, say in the past month. So now to come here tonight and see that graph and see that there are four positive staff members at Wayne Valley. So okay, maybe that two happened today. Uh, and 22 positive students. We have not received 22 letters about positive students. So where, where are these students? Are they virtual students? Are we are, are we only receiving letters for students who are coming to school? Um, or are, you know, this, these numbers don't add up. So that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Hi, Tara Daly, 53 Osceola Road. Dr. Goldberg, thanks for staying on because my question's for you. Can you please define exposure for the community? So everyone is on the same page. Um, my other question is for Dr. Toback. If the CDC makes the three-foot social distancing recommendation, will the district adjust this plan? Uh, right now the cohorts are not being combined at the high school level, but over 50% of the students are virtual. Right now, my son, today he had two classes where he was the only child in the class. The maximum number of students he has in a class are five students. So knowing those numbers, I would really like to understand why the cohorts at the high school cannot be combined. Lastly, we have all been in this together now for a year. The finger pointing about who is doing what in the community has got to stop. When Mrs. Albany's asked before about how, what was going on in the community that's caused the increase? And the answer was given talking about students and what they've been doing and sports. But your own chart says there's 40 teachers out right now. I personally don't care what those teachers have been doing. This is a virus. It's none of anybody's business. Let's all just do the right thing. Wash our hands, wear your mask, follow the guidelines that you've put into place and trust each other. Talking about spring break, I'm very confused why the staff is so concerned about spring break. If there's pe- children quarantining, how does that affect the staff coming to work and doing their job? Those families won't come. They will follow the plan that you have put out. Let's, some positive things are happening here. The teachers are getting vaccinated. Our community is getting vaccinated. The children are loving being in school more. Please, let's support each other and be positive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next caller.
Hi, Jennifer Turi, 31 Mayfair Drive. I just wanted to follow up with an email I had sent this week and Dr. Toback did respond and say that my questions would be answered tonight in regards to why the Early Childhood Center is not moving towards its full day. I know that Dr. Reichman did answer these questions vaguely. She stated there's a staffing issue with covering preps for the preschool teachers. Um, I would appreciate a little more elaboration on what that means and who typically was covering those preps in a plan prior to COVID for preschool teachers. Um, she also stated that transportation was an issue. And, and what does that mean? Because if the district had planned to open um, on, in a normal year, why is transportation now an issue? I also know that the preschool is extremely um, under-enrolled right now. The numbers are extremely low. So if there is such an under enrollment, couldn't the administration be creative in possibly combining classes? My son's class has three in-person students right now. Um, so if there's a coverage issue, why can't classes be combined? We do know that the CDC says the, this, the youngest children um, have the least, uh, least likelihood of spreading the virus and they don't have to social distance with six feet. So again, I, I, I just, uh, it doesn't sit well with me that the response to why the youngest population in this district is not being prioritized to return to school full-time to prepare them for kindergarten next year, which is going to be a full day. Um, again, I would just appreciate a little more elaboration on these questions um, as to the rationale why the Early Childhood Center is not reopening. Um, and for the students in that building that have IEPs to echo um, what Commissioner Pavlik said, that we are going to be looking at a situation for compensatory services for these students and what is the district going to do? To, to make up for all the lost time for these students in their IEPs. Um, so I would just appreciate answers to those questions. Thank you for your time and I appreciate all the hard work going into these plans. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next caller.
Good evening. Nicole Conti, Old Homestead Road. I just wanted to circle back to Ms. Kumar's um, comment earlier about why we are, a question about why we are staggering the return between K through 12 and then three through five. So uh, Dr. Toback, the response was that um, after conversations with the principals, they thought it would be too hectic to have everybody return basically at the same time. I just want to point out how ridiculous that sounds considering these administrators are responsible for the return of hundreds of students every year in September and then again in spring and fall. So really would like to just get a little more insight about what that's about. Um, and to just again, reiterate the community's needs and wants to have this pushed up even further and have that at least at the same date as the K through 12, the April 19th. I don't see the need for the additional week. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, uh, can you hear me? Great. Uh, this is Evie Wenting, Seven Seminole. Thank you, everybody, uh, for all your work you've put in. I had a comment about the positive rates. We keep talking about these positive rates and they're increasing, but we're not mentioning the hospital, hospitalizations. Um, I know my husband who works at the hospital, when it was bad, there were over 200 people with COVID at the hospital. Now the number is about 30. We should, when we make these decisions about our children, we should consider that as well, not just worry about tests because a lot of the people have no symptoms. With, um, I did wanted to check on the playground issue that was mentioned earlier today. When do the kids, because right now they don't have any playground time. They go to school. They barely have lunch and they come home. So when we're talking about opening the playground, in my mind is when my son leaves first grade, that's when he runs for the playground where there is an adult with him watching. Right now they're just running around on the grass because they don't really have a choice. But they would love to go on the playground with selected friends and there is always an adult presence. So what are you talking about when you say you need staffing and you need cleaning and you need all these different things? When are you thinking the kids are actually going on the playground at the time of school time? I don't understand. So those were my comments and I agree with the caller before me when it comes to the high school. My son, I asked him, he had a history class. He was the only kid in that class. So if it's possible to combine those um, and make them go full-time, my, my, all three kids love going to school and they wish they could go every day. Um, so I definitely support that. So thank you again um, for your work and everything. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Next caller.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thanks. All right. First I want to say, my name is Angela Tetla. I am a parrot, Anthony Wayne. I'm also currently the Vice President of the Wayne Powers Education Association. Um, I would like to say thank you for all that you guys have done this past year to keep our students and our staff safe. I am asking this question as I'm hearing it um, being asked amongst employees in the building and I will also piggyback on Eda's question about spring break. Um, Dr. Goldberg had said something that uh, piqued my interest. Um, if we are to prepare as we did in January, according to Dr. Bol- Goldberg regarding um, after the winter break for the holidays. So shouldn't we do as we did in January and be virtual for the two weeks after spring break? I mean, as a parent had just previously stated, it's not the behavior. It's the behavior of people and not necessarily the location. So families will be getting together and families will be traveling out of state to visit other families and some will be going on spring break. Um, and I would love to say that all children stay home when they are sick. That simply doesn't happen. Um, so in in keeping with the ideas of keeping the students and staff safe, I'm going to ask the board to seriously consider being virtual for the two weeks after spring break to keep everyone safe as our numbers have increased um, since the beginning of March, quite dramatically. And again, thank you for everything that you've done and that's just my question for tonight. Please consider virtual for two, uh, two weeks after spring break.
Thank you. Next caller.
Hi, uh, my name is Nicola Tito. I'm at 25 Bremer Drive. Can you guys hear me okay? Awesome. So just real quick, um, again, thank you all. I feel like as a parent in this community and I've been on all of these board meeting uh, board meetings for many months now, I've listened intently. And um, I really do see that there has been a lot of progress made and that is really comforting and um, it, it's great to see. But I, I have just a question and a comment and my comment firstly is, and it's really more directly um, to the WEA president. I feel like a lot of these comments about parents are extraordinarily divisive, insulting, and outright untrue. I can tell you that um, for myself and many other, speaking for many other parents in the community, we have all taken a step back from very successful careers to be home for our children at this very difficult time, as I'm sure uh, many of you have as well. Um, we are not in town throwing parties and disregarding guidelines. We want nothing more than to work with, you know, our teachers, our community, and to make things right again. So I really feel like those kinds of comments, which seem to be happening on a monthly basis, that really needs to, she really needs to think about that and think about how that's affecting the parents in the community. That's the first thing. The second thing is, um, Dr. Goldberg mentioned earlier that um, he felt like, you know, we needed to think twice about the spring ba- break situation and possibly um, you know, uh, go, you know, have a, a virtual time period, I believe, after. And I understand that, but I, at the, when we looked at things and he was comparing where we were in And I understand that, but I, when we looked at things and he was comparing where we were in January as to where we are now, I completely agreed with it in January, but now vaccinations are thankfully making teachers a priority and vaccinations are in circulation and they were not prior. So I am wondering if, if as we move forward, if, if that will be taken into consideration a little bit more and if, if, if we will, if that will kind of impact things going forward in the decision-making. That was really my only two question and comment. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next caller. Next caller.
Hi, Elana Ginsberg. I have a student at Lafayette Elementary School. In the spirit of going virtual after spring break, I know that two weeks has been discussed, but would an option of one week after spring break, so the week of April 5, be considered? And then accelerating the return full-time date to April 12, that would kind of appease everybody. The teachers wanting the quarantine period or the virtual period rather after spring break and the parents who want their kids to go back full-time, getting that a week earlier. So if that could just be answered as part of the follow-up questions, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next. Hello?
Hi, my name is Morale, Lemon Stanford Place, calling in regards to, I know allergy season is right around the corner and my concern is, I guess, a concern and also to get some clarity as far as what the district has in place addressing, you know, students who are going to be severely, you know, allergic to pollen, seasonal allergies, sneezing is, you know, definitely gonna happen. So in particular, my son, I was told to keep him home for 10 days and quarantine him because he sneezed virtually. So what does the district have in place for students who, like my son, they're going to experience these symptoms? So to keep our kids home for 10 days because they sneeze, I don't think is acceptable. So if we can get some clarity on that. And I appreciate everything that everybody has been doing and I am thankful. So I'm just, you know, it's just a concern and just to be proactive.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mr. Pavlik. Okay, that concludes our public session. Dr. Goldberg, there were a couple of questions directed to you that you may answer if you wish. You still with us, Dr. Goldberg? I think he left his screen for a moment.
There he is. He's back.
Dr. Goldberg, are you, are you back?
I'm sorry, I had a emergency call from the hospital.
There you are.
Not COVID related.
So sorry to hear that. Okay. Did you want to address any of the comments or questions that were for you?
As I recall, the first question had to do with the definition of what a contact is. It's changed obviously since the beginning of the epidemic period. It's now recognized as a total of 15 minutes within three feet over a 24-hour period. So as you can see, it's kind of very all-encompassing throughout the day. I think there were comments about the playground issue. Again, it's a matter of safety. And, you know, from a medical point of view, it can be done, but it will require more people involved. I'm sorry, I'm looking for the list of the things that I had for questions, but I don't seem to know where I put it in the last five minutes. Does anybody recall any of the other questions?
There was one about spring break. I think there's a lot of consternation about should we close? Should we stay open? What is your feeling on the spring break aftermath?
The issue of spring break, first off, somebody asked why we're seeing an increase now prior to spring break. And I don't mean to be pejorative when I say that people are getting fatigued with COVID restrictions. This is just what we're seeing throughout the country. And so we see an increase in it and it's not to mean that there aren't people who are working very hard to continue COVID restricting themselves. Unfortunately, not everybody is both involved in school systems and uninvolved in school systems. Given what we have seen in the past, we know that for the time period after, for the time period after spring break, for the 10 to 14 days afterward, we'll probably see an increase in cases that will be brought in from people who have traveled elsewhere and have been inadvertently infected. I think one of the questions was, you know, why not one week versus two weeks? Right now, the CDC recommendation for quarantine is between 10 to 14 days. I know I've discussed this with other members of the board and with Dr. Toback. 14 days is the most conservative aspect that there is. It may well be something that can be looked at as more data comes out, but for now it was settled on 14 days.
The main question was, did you feel we should go to virtual instruction versus in-person to?
Again, it's a matter of balance. The most obvious thing is the safest thing, no doubt from a medical aspect is virtual. And in fact, staying virtual is the safest thing for the rest of the school year and for until everyone is immunized and we've achieved herd immunity. But it's not feasible, especially when most parents and as a pediatrician, I think children do belong back in school. So balancing the risks, balancing what there can be and using the social distancing and the cohorting approach, this seems to be a safe way to do it. Neither being overly cautious, neither being extremely overly cautious and neither being extremely overly cavalier. It's a matter of finding a balance and seeing as best as we can do.
Okay, I think you've answered that sufficiently. Was there anything else? From anyone for Dr. Goldberg? I think he needs to, go ahead.
There was one parent question about allergies and COVID and how to basically get advice as to being able to go to school when you have a chronic allergy, a child who has chronic allergies. So I feel like that's both for Dr. Goldberg and Dr. Toback, I think, as far as how to handle that.
The, the issue of, you know, I think we dealt with this at the beginning of the COVID experience when the Board of Health, various states and various organizations put out a list of all-encompassing symptoms that you were supposed to quarantine if you had any of them. And among them was headache, body ache, sneezing, coughing. And it, you know, it became really, from my mind and for a lot of others, an unworkable list because it didn't differentiate between a normal cold and a COVID and the like. I think what we've learned is that if you have fever, you have an infection. Whether it's COVID or it's going to be another viral illness, that's another topic. But for those people who normally have spring allergies, they know, and the family will know that this is part of their normal allergic reaction, the rhinorrhea, the runny nose, the slight cough, the postnasal drip. In the absence of fever, my recommendation is to go to school or to participate in whatever manner it's being done. Obviously, if you have fever, this is not an allergic issue. This is an infectious issue and until you're evaluated, tested for COVID, et cetera, you need to stay in quarantine or stay home.
Thank you. That's good advice. Anyone else for Dr. Goldberg? Okay. Well, doctor, thank you very much.
Thank you all. Yeah, I also commend the board for trying to deal with a very difficult situation as we try to strike a balance between what's best for all involved. And with that, good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night, Dr. Goldberg. Okay, let's get back to our agenda. Committees. Would like to go first. Dr. Pav, I'm sorry. Now I'm calling you, Dr. Pavlik.
Almost, a couple more years.
Okay. Whatever. Mr. Pavlik, Commissioner Pavlik.
I pretty much answered anything, so it doesn't matter. Good evening. The Facilities and Transportation Committee met this evening, myself, Mrs. Kazan, Mr. Moth, Mr. Blanchard, and Mr. Skavitsky. We reviewed the ESAP program. We have four schools completed with the new lighting, which is highly cost-effective. We spoke about the, we have a limited number of permits that were issued for the use of our gym by the Boys Club in the PAL along with COVID protocols and restrictions for them as well as cleaning. The district has ordered approximately 1,700 shields, both desk shields and tabletop shields, which will be in prior to the reopening. We discussed playgrounds as we have also tonight. We also discussed the tents that will be going up in a number in our high schools and our middle schools. And we talked about the continual testing that's being done by the Facilities Department in the schools. They're doing swab tests on, on surfaces to determine the cleanliness. And our numbers have coming back way below the acceptable, the guidelines that have been set forth by the CDC. We're also testing our buses. Transportation, we discussed the number of agreements with Sussex County Co-op for busing, which have come in at a much better price than the other, some of the other co-ops who all of a sudden decide they're raising prices. We spoke about our upgraded computer system and our transportation department that integrates with OnCourse. We will be reissuing approximately 2,500 bus passes within the next two weeks. Before school reopen, before we come, before, let's see, we were going to have them out by April 12th. This is in, in order to address the new schedule in the high school and the middle school. So all those who are being bused by high school, middle school, you will be getting a new bus pass, which is about 2,500 students that will be reissuing to. The state's coming in for their annual or their semi-annual bus inspection. And we also spoke about the continually training for the drivers, for driver safety as well as COVID protocols. TSA came in and did an assessment of the transportation facility. And kudos to the Facilities and Transportation. TSA is going to take our program and they're going to, they're going to use that as their model for the country. So kudos to them. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlik. They do a phenomenal job. Mr. Giordano.
Thank you, Mrs. Kazan. Today, March 18, 2021, at 5 o'clock, the Personnel Committee met. Participating was myself, Mrs. Scher and Mrs. Puttup. Administrator available and briefing us was Paula Clark. At the meeting, we had a review of the Personnel Committee minutes from the February 25th meeting. We then moved on to topics such as per diem and substitute rates we are discussing right now. We also looked into long-term replacement rates also being discussed right now. And we were given a preliminary idea and a list for the next meeting, which will discuss RIF and non-renewals for 2021. And that was what happened at the meeting today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Albanese.
Thank you, Mrs. Kazan. The Communications Committee met tonight at 5:00 PM. In attendance were Board members Eileen Albanese, Michael Bubba, Duan Kumar, and our administrator is Dr. Mark Toback. We reviewed the Phase 5 Back to School Plan that was shown tonight. And we also had a discussion about recent media coverage and e-newsletter articles written about the district. And that was our meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does that cover everyone? Okay. Let's move some agenda items. Would someone like to move?
Madam President?
Mr. Pavlik.
I'd like to move the agenda as one item.
Can I get a second? Mr. Giordano. Is there any discussion on any of the agenda items? Mrs. Albanese.
Thank you. On R, number one, the Phase 5 Plan, that's the Return to School Plan. I know we've had a lot of discussion about this. I know that there's been concern about trying to get kids back into school more quickly. There's been concern about coming back too quickly when we're going to have, when we're looking at numbers that increase. So I want to thank the administration for all the hard work. I will support the plan. I think it's really doing its best to listen to the community and to try to give the best that they can for as many as they can. And I think that it's a plan that, that works for our district. Under O, School Resources Finance, the tentative budget, I continue to have a concern about the use of bank cap with the money that we have received for COVID expenses, with the additional money that we will receive, although we don't have a number yet from the new plan. I have a concern about adding additional taxation to members of the community. For people who are unaware, bank cap is not money we have in the bank. Bank cap is the ability for the board to tax residents of the town over the 2% cap. We're looking at over a million dollars in bank cap and I, I'm not going to support a budget that includes that for taxpayers at this time. We all know that there are many residents of our community who are struggling financially as a result of either COVID illnesses or the pandemic. I just don't see that we have that need at this point to add in that bank cap additional over a million dollars. So I won't be supporting the tentative budget as it exists today. Thank you.
Mr. Bubba.
Keeping with my past votes, I've never supported a bank cap budget. I just think it's just an excuse that we can use to tax that in this case, we actually don't have to. We did receive more money from the state. We are getting more money from the federal government. This isn't necessary. We need to figure that out without overtaxing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll comment on the budget. I happen to think it's a very good budget. The increase is 2.6% total. And the reason for the bank cap is Chapter 44. Chapter 44 has had an impact on us that we haven't even begun to see the final of. It's, it's a partial this year. It'll get worse next year. Because in its infinite wisdom, the legislature gave us something and now they've taken it back. As for the federal money, that can only be used for COVID-related items. Our general fund still has to go to all the other things we typically support. And the uptick in funding from the state was part of the plan to introduce full-day kindergarten. So we do need, unfortunately, to use the bank cap to pay for Chapter 44 and the decrease to our district as a result. The School Board Association is lobbying. The School Board Association is lobbying against this because, once again, the teachers were taken care of, the state healthcare plan was taken care of, but the districts were not. We get no relief this time. Um, and that was part of the Chapter 78 deal and the 2% cap. So now that's being revoked. So I, I have to disagree with my colleagues that this bank cap is unnecessary because, you know, all of these different funds are compartmentalized for specific thing. Uh, when COVID goes away, the money goes away and it can't be used for anything else. It can't be used for full-day kindergarten. It can't be used for salaries. It can't be used for any of those things. So, um, at least I can say for once, since I've been a board member, we're raising taxes and we're getting something quite grand for it. Full-day kindergarten for this district, which is going to be a big boom for our property values and for the students' education. So I'm happy to support it and I also want to thank the administration for all these months of work. And going into Phase Five, and, uh, I'm looking forward to concluding this year on a high note and getting all of those end-of-year activities done. And hopefully we'll get some relief from the state on that as far as how many students we can have in the classroom, et cetera. So at this point, did you have something, Mrs. Kumar?
Yes, I was going to jump in before you did, but that's okay. Um, thank you. Um, I was basically going to say what Ms. Kazan just said about the fact that tax per 44 has really negatively affected our budget. Um, and the fact that this bank cap, and it's been what we've been working for, for the past how many years to get this full-day kindergarten up and running. Um, so for that reason, I think it's really important to support the budget. So that's why I would be in support of budget. And, uh, thank you for the plan and hopefully we can go through and we can see a positive in terms of our COVID numbers and everything else with our return to school plan in the next phase.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do I hear Eli snoring, Mr. Bubba?
Um, actually, yes.
Put yourself on mute, please. We're all calling Mr. Moffett.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Puttup?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
No to O number five, yes to the rest.
Mr. Bubba?
No to O number five, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yes, that's a yes for me. Okay, thank you. Alrighty. Get to our second public portion. Final for the evening. Okay. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, second. Mrs. Kumar. Okay. Let's begin.
Good evening. Tori Esposito, Woodlot Road. In regards to spring break, everybody is so quick to talk about virtual. Why don't we cancel spring break, let the kids go to school, so we alleviate that problem? The problem if you go to, to virtual for spring break for two weeks, May 31st is what? Memorial Day. Oh, we have two unused emergency days. So now the kids are off Friday and Tuesday. Are we just going to end the school year on June 1st because you're going to quarantine again for two weeks? If you're going to go virtual, cancel spring break. We'd have to do it anyway if we had, if we had extra unused emergency days that we have to eat into spring break. If you go virtual, you're going to kill the momentum and the kids are just going to be done. Just cancel spring break if that's, if that's the case. Other districts are doing it. They're keeping the kids in school and let them get out early. Just cancel spring break, please. And to the parents that call in that have their kids that have been remote all year, don't worry about the playgrounds being open if your kid's not going to go on it. The kids that go to school, they want to be on. So don't worry about that, okay? Kids are, you can go a half mile down the street on Lowie and you can play in the playground all you want. Whatever you want, let the kids play in school. Open it up if your kid's virtual. That's fine. You do you, I do me. Everybody does everything that they want to do, okay? Baseball, nobody's going to be wearing masks in the, in the spring in Little League field, okay? Please, with the spring break, keep it going. Don't go virtual or cancel spring break. Let the kids keep going to school. If you can't go anywhere anyway, that alleviates all the problems. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Uh, hi, Katie Cluck, 34 Hellcrest Drive. Um, I want to talk about the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Goal. Um, I know that it's a year-long goal. Um, have you considered making it, um, renewing the goal for next year? Um, it will take far longer than just a single year to dismantle the systems of imperialism, white supremacy, and racism that centuries have reinforced and that why, um, our educational system and just everything in society is the way it is. So it's going to take a lot more than just one year. Have we considered? It's just a continuous, ongoing process of looking at and evaluating our curriculum as we keep going. And then, um, will or how will Wayne Schools, um, address the increase in racist incidents towards Asian-Americans? Um, it's not just an, uh, problem outside of our community, but within it. Um, especially there was a lot of increase in, um, racism towards Asian-Americans, uh, towards the beginning of the pandemic. Um, I saw it when I was in school. It was definitely a problem. And I was just wondering if the school has, or the district has considered, um, talking about and supporting our Asian-American students, uh, because they're really hurting and they definitely, uh, need some support. So, uh, thank you so much for everything you've been doing. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Hi, Eileen D'Amico, 29 Manor Drive. Um, I'm just going to try and ask the last question that I ran out of time for before. Um, and it was essentially this. I'm just curious, specifically, what, if anything, are members of the district administration, the board, either individually or in concert with each other, doing to help, at this point, lobby our state officials to make decisions now, which will most decidedly impact the ability for our seniors to have many of the senior events that they are desperately looking forward to. Things like prom, graduation, senior awards, senior breakfast, their yearbook signing, and so on and so forth. Um, you know, as, as I, I think waiting until, sort of sitting and waiting until maybe two weeks after spring break, it's really just too late. And I think you all know that. To try and plan things that would technically have to happen sometime in early to mid-May in order to avoid risk of having a quarantine for graduation, as an example, these are things that, a lot of them have to happen in May. Um, and, you know, to wait that late in April to try and even plan something just isn't feasible. So that's my question. But, you know, where I'm getting to with that is that I've had the opportunity to talk to a number of our seniors, specifically at Hills, um, about two weeks ago, for some other things. And, um, in the course of that conversation, and, and full disclosure, these are not friends of my son. They're actually kids I'd never had the ability to speak to before. And, um, a comment or a comment by one young lady who was on one of the Zoom calls that we were conducting really says it all. So I'm going to leave you with this. Um, we were discussing the tradition of, of the seniors putting their handprints on the walls at Hills and the students were commenting how they really hoped, um, for the opportunity to be able to continue that tradition this year. And the quote by the young woman, uh, was this. "I really hope that I can leave my handprint at Wayne Hills this year because I don't want the seniors to be forgotten. I don't want to be forgotten this year anymore than we already have been." And that's a direct quote. Thank you.
Thank you. Make it a mover? Mr. Giordano, seconded. Mr. Pavlak. Okay. Dr. Toback. Um, how would you like to address? Will you get back to the parents? It's entirely up to you.
Right, so let's go through the, um, the questions. I think I have most of them written down. So anyway, starting off with Mr. Ginsberg. Okay, so before the school year started, we provided a photo of a model classroom. So provided parents with an opportunity to see what a classroom would look like during the pandemic. And you saw, it's pretty stark as far as all the, the normal things that we have in a classroom were removed. And so a lot of people were stunned by that photo. I suppose the thing to do now would be to provide a photo now that we're going to have the desk shields in place. So we'll provide you a model classroom. The question about sanitation stations, our elementary classrooms for most part have sinks, but it's still the best way to, um, keep your hands clean and to, um, prevent the spread. With regard to windows being open, that is, um, really up, that, that's something that's in every classroom, depending on the temperature, the conditions outside, or medical conditions that students might have in, in the classroom. Mr. Esposito made comments, but there were no questions. Mr. Tempezcu made comments, no questions. Edifronte made comments, but there were no questions. Eileen D'Amico asked, um, a question about, um, why was the teacher survey open-ended but not the parent survey? Ultimately, we, we know that as far as our parents go, one, we've certainly heard quite a bit of parent feedback, but two, the ability to collect and collate and make sense of probably six to 7,000 comments is quite a difficult thing to do when you have all the other things added together. Um, we have a very good sense of what our parent community thinks. And so we didn't feel that that was necessary at the time. And we also, if we do collect information like that, we want to do a good job with interpreting it, making sense of it. And that requires an awful lot of time. Um, let's see here. Okay. So with regard to the lobbying of officials, I know that Mrs. Reichman mentioned about, our county superintendent talking about the fact there's tremendous amount of pressure on the governor's office to provide guidance. And much like parents say, well, you know, in other, other communities, they do this, they do that. We do know in other states, there's different types of guidance that are available to school districts to plan events and then have the event approved based on a plan that you develop at each district. Those are the types of things that would provide every district with a lot of flexibility. These things have been shared with the governor's office. And then, like I said, I know there's already a lot of pressure. The New Jersey Association of School Administrators is the superintendent and assistant superintendent's organization. I know for sure they are interested in hearing more because we know that our students, in the end of the year, they're depending on us to be able to deliver these events. And I agree that they should not be planned for the last minute. Um, that does make things very difficult again for, it's a terrible situation for the students. But it's also, it's very difficult because there's a lot of high expectations here in every community for those events. So to plan those at the last minute. With regard to combining cohorts, at this point, we've had a discussion. We've shared why, um, we recommend not combining cohorts, um, at all levels. As far as letters for the staff, the district, the central office produces letters for each principal. And so the principals are the ones that distribute those letters. But for anybody in the community who would like to know about the different cases and where the cases are, every letter that we produce is posted on our website, the COVID-19 Return to School website. All those letters are there, dating back to the beginning of, um, the epidemic. Um, so regarding other, another question from Mrs. Daly. She asked about exposure. She wanted Dr. Goldberg to define exposure. Um, let's see. With regard to the high schools, so based on the survey, we do see that a number of students are going to be coming back. However, we also see there's a lot of cases right now in the high schools. And so we do have to be concerned about that. We do have spring break coming up. We do know that that time period, um, we're not really quite sure. So let's see what happens. I think it's best to, to move along in our progression, but not do so in an overly aggressive way. Um, Ms. Terry asked about the ECC. We'll have to get back to you about that. I'm not really quite sure. You want to elaborate? Go ahead. Okay, Mrs. Reichman is going to elaborate right now.
Sorry, I could expand on that a little bit more. If, if we were to combine, um, classes, we wouldn't be able to socially distance and we could, um, end up in a situation. So, so right now, um, we're looking at combining cohorts, but not combining classes. With continuing cohorts, the numbers are going to range from seven to 12 students in a class. If we combine the classes, we would exceed 16. And that would be very, very difficult with small age children being confined to a seat with their desk shields and not having any movement. Uh, the buses stagger. Elementary is a minimal day. So, um, you know, that was a challenge as well with the ECC because of the way they're staggered. One thing that we could do is we could revisit, and I will speak with Dr. Hammond. And maybe it's a possibility for some classes to be combined where the numbers would be smaller once we know who's returning. So I, I am more than happy to go back and revisit and see if we, if there's anything additional we can do once we have a commitment from parents and know exactly who's returning. We'll look at each situation, um, and each age group differently.
So then, um, going on to, um, comment from Ms. Conti. She asked about staggering one week. So indicated that was ridiculous. Um, I've, I've explained the position of the district regarding the reason for staggering. With Mrs. Ventic, she had a comment, not a question. Angela, Angela Tetla talked about two weeks virtual after spring break. I didn't have a question for that. There was other questions. There was a, there were comments. The allergy season, okay. So the allergy question. Yep. Well, we, we, but as far as, okay, so Dr. Goldberg answered the medical side of it, as far as the school district goes. If there's a case where a child has an allergy, okay? For every school nurse, there should be a record of that on file. If there is no record of an allergy that we have on file, then we have to investigate the situation. We have to make sure. So ultimately, these situations we can't avoid. If, um, we do have a record of a child having allergies. If we have no record of allergies, then we have to be cautious about that. Um, we don't just assume that a child has allergies. And so that's how these things happen. If there is a child that, um, has an allergy and we have document, has allergies and we have documentation of that, then either one, you can get a negative test, you can go back, or you can come back with a note from your doctor, but you're not quarantined. And then you would, at that point, not be questioned again about those same symptoms. In other words, if the child had those same symptoms, again, once you have that record and you have a doctor's note on file, then there's no need, we know it's allergies. So that's how sometimes there's confusion, perhaps in a classroom. And it could potentially lead to a situation of quarantine if the school is not made aware of a child with allergies. Um, okay. Mr. Esposito, he said what he said about spring break. Katie Cluck, as far as the, the goal, we're going to continue to, um, look at that. For this year, we do understand there's a, a lot of work to do with the goal. And so we have every expectation to continue into the next year. But those are, the, the goals of the district are an annual thing. And that's something that happens generally in August. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be doing that right now. And if there are any incidents that you're referring to, I'm not aware of them. But it's certainly, um, if you would like to email me or give me a call to describe what you're talking about, I would be happy to open up, um, an investigation of any situation where any group of students is being discriminated against or treated unfairly. Um, I think that basically gets all the questions.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. Okay, here we are, end of the evening. Uh, old business? New business? Mrs. Kumar, I know, I'm sorry, I overlooked a retirement that needed to be read. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Miss Lisa Barrows, a paraprofessional. We are here today to show respect and love for Mrs. Lisa Barrows. Lisa has spent 17 years supporting students and programs as a paraprofessional. During her tenure, she has served in the capacity of a one-to-one, shared, classroom paraprofessional and job coach. Lisa has such many lives along the way, including fellow colleagues, teachers, families, and most importantly, students. She always puts students first and treats all with kindness and respect. Lisa is always available to lend a hand and is flexible, punctual, and has always provided consistency and diligence to all assignments. Lisa, you will be missed. Wayne Township Public Schools wishes you good luck in your future endeavors. Enjoy retirement with your family and grandchildren.
Thank you, Mrs. Kumar. Anybody else? Board comments? Anyone? I just wanted to address Mrs. D'Amico. I do attend a lot of meetings at the state level. And all of the board members throughout the state are definitely concerned with if and when we're going to loosen these restrictions. And basically, it's all about how many vaccinations we could get accomplished and obviously the positivity rate. So I think that's still the deciding factor, but we're certainly getting closer on the vaccine situation. And from what I've been told, the beginning of April should be an onslaught of available doses. And let's, let's pray that happens because if that's the case, we'll be closer to fully opening and reducing some of the restrictions we're still dealing with under the executive orders and guidelines. So, anyone? And once again, thank you, Mayor Vergano, for lining up appointments for our teachers. And if you haven't heard from the administration and you want to get a vaccine, obviously, reach out to your principal. And we'll get you on the list. I'm very happy about that. Anyone? I need a mover. Mrs. Puttup?
Sure.
And Mrs. Kumar?